We will call this meeting to order. And first, I'd like to ask Ms. Melissa Rosetta lead us in our opening prayer.
Dear lady, dear lord, bless all these people that came out tonight in this chilly weather. Dear lord, be with the leadership of our town if they make the decision and the right decisions for our town. Dear lord, give us all strength as we go through 2013. We may be going through some tough times ourselves. And dear lord, be with the military people because they need your strength and guidance also. We ask these things in my name.
Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Roll call.
Dennis Blackebank.
Here.
Don Davis.
Here.
Calvin Gill.
Here.
Pat Johnson.
Here.
Ricky Morris.
Here.
Terry Newman.
Here.
Alan Rives.
Here.
First, I want to note and thank Wayne Morris for being here. He is recording tonight's meeting, but it is free. We have not paid any money for this. We still have to discuss that, and that will come up later on in the agenda. But I want to thank Wayne for being here tonight to give us an idea of what it would look like were we to do that, where the council to authorize that expenditure. First order of business tonight is, obviously, we need to cancel Monday night's meeting as there would be no one in attendance where we'd have one. We have, y'all have signed the waiver where you say it's okay to have a meeting tonight, but we have to have a formal roll call vote saying that we're canceling what is a regularly scheduled meeting otherwise. So do I have a motion that we cancel Monday night's regularly scheduled meeting in lieu of tonight's meeting?
I don't make a motion to cancel it.
Say it.
Dennis.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Calvin.
Yeah.
Pat.
Yes.
Ricky.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes. Okay, the minutes from December 3rd were mailed to you. Are there any changes? If not, we need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to accept the minutes because they are.
Say it. Ricks.
Dennis.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Calvin.
Yeah.
Pat.
Yes.
Ricky.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Okay, before we get to Don's report, I've got a couple of announcements I want to make while they're fresh on my mind. Denver McCool, deputy McCool did not be here tonight. He would normally be here on meetings, but he may just come for one meeting a month tonight. He was unavailable. I told him that was fine. Along that line, though, Denver has been working with me on a couple of things. Remember the last meeting? We had some folks that sat right over here where Melissa and Joyce were sitting there, and they were talking about they had a dog complaint over here. Well, I've got another dog complaint in the same area. Denver's been patrolling over there. I myself have driven over there, and we haven't yet seen the dogs. We think the people have put them up, but we're not sure. I called one of the people today and didn't get them. Left a message and never heard back from them, but we've not seen the dogs since. So maybe, maybe the people have put them up, but we don't know. But I have driven near and in half circle, and we think that maybe that's taken care of. We don't know for sure. We'll, I'm sure if something else comes up, we'll hear about it. In Melissa's prayer, she mentioned military. I want to recognize the fact that Gene Duffy's son was recognized as having been promoted to commander in Navy. That is an impressive, impressive position. And he was, was a lieutenant commander. His first name is Grady, or maybe his middle name is what he goes by. But that's, that's very impressive to have a Wilsonville person as a commander in Navy. I had an uncle that retired as a commander, and that's a very impressive position. We have a safety, or the safety appreciation meeting coming up on January 15th, and all the council is supposed to come. That is for basically appreciation of our volunteer fire department. We changed it to January this year instead of December as January is kind of an easier time for more people to come. And we're having it this year at the 4-H Club. And I think we got a good price on our meal for the volunteer firefighters, and we want to remember that we gave huge bargain in our volunteer fire department. So spending a little bit of money for dinner for appreciation for them is, I think, highly appropriate. And we have sort of off the cuff decided, but further input is welcome along the way. We've sort of decided that 4-H Club is an appropriate venue because it's so close, and we don't have to put another fire department on alert while all the volunteer fire department is there. But we've also sort of decided that we may rotate it between 4-H Club and the Methodist Church and keep the money in town and let the Methodist women do it. But it's, that's a big job, and didn't want to ask them to do that every year, although it is a money maker for them. So, but if anybody else has any input or any public comment on that, all that's welcome. We're trying to make sure that we do something that is, that is mindful and showing of our appreciation of the volunteer fire department while at the same time making sure we try to keep it close and try to spend our money wisely. And, let's see, what else do I have?
Do we have a time on that at this point?
Six o'clock.
I'm sorry, 16, yes. One other thing about law enforcement. You may have noticed that our deputy has been stationed at the school. That is a temporary measure. There's supposedly a BOE meeting today with the sheriff's department. Dennis might elaborate on that because I didn't hear from anybody from the sheriff's department today. I was hoping I would, but that situation is a little bit fluid right now. But I am not in favor of having the deputy tied down at school 100% of the time because it's contract deputy that we pay for. I don't have a problem with having deputy there. In fact, I think it's a good idea, but it's not, ought not to be our budget. It would be my stance on that. So, did you hear anything on that today, Dennis?
Captain Corbell and I talked about it. They've got a plan that they're going to probably release tomorrow where they'll be putting somebody up there. I'm pretty sure full-time, just like they do in the rest of the schools. But like Captain Corbell said, he's just trying, he, they do a lot of things for the city that don't get paid for just like Captain Corbell told you. So it's kind of just a transitional phase right now, so you and Captain Corbell got to work that. It's not a big deal. It's not a permanent thing.
Right, right. And, and, and we were gracious when we spoke. Anybody got to hear anything, but you know.
Yeah, so.
Making sure that we understood each other's position on that.
Yeah, it's not a crowded voting conference.
Okay, Don, you're up. Before you're up, let me, let me say this. Kay and I have had a talk. I've had a couple of council members ask for reports that are similar to some, some of the old style reports that you got. Anything you want, any council member, any financial data you want, you can ask Kay for it anytime you want to. Now, Kay can say, "I'm busy right now. Come back tomorrow," whatever. Y'all, you can't go in there and just say, "Drop what you're doing. Give me what I want right now." There is one exception to that, and that is Don. Don was voted by y'all to be your treasurer, and he can get the documents anytime he wants. And I explained that to Kay, and she said, "Well, Don's your pet council person." And she may have told somebody else that too. That's not right. That's just not, that's. The issue is, he has been given the authority as treasurer to get that information. If she says, "I'm busy right now," he can say, "Well, I don't care. I want it right now." So I don't want anybody thinking though that you can't have the data because you can't. Anything you want, you have. And if you don't want to be able, Kay, get Don to get it. There you go.
I don't care, Don.
You can get that here, all right. Don, would you please give us a report if you have one?
When I went in this morning to get it, she said, "I'm busy." The general fund income was $58,227. We spent $43,330, leaving a net of $18,897. In the checking account, we have $444,131. In CDs, we have $160,799, which is a grand total of $604,840. In water, the total income was $39,983. We spent $48,286 for a loss of $8,303. Which leaves us $341,399.
Is that all you got?
That's it.
All right. Couple of questions. The general fund income was 58. How much of that was business licenses? You know, Kay?
Not off the top of my head, but I should have it on what I gave him.
Well, business, did business licenses come in pretty good this month?
Yes.
Okay. Do you get the majority of them in December or in January?
In January and on into February with, and even into March with insurance companies.
Okay. Is there a penalty if they go past a particular date?
Yeah, but we usually don't import it.
That's what I thought.
But I'll tell you, if you does, RDS does.
Yeah. When, when RDS collects, contacts somebody, they clear after everything, including the penalty. And the penalty stayed on the invoice.
Right.
Right. Well, I just paid my, I just paid a business license in Alabaster, you know, and I care for it. Looked over there, the way they do it. And ours is about the same. I mean, it's kind of similar form to all municipalities use, and so that's, that's good to know. The, on, on the water, any particular reason that we had big loss in water?
Yes. She paid Columbia in October for the month of December. She wrote the check on October 30th to 31st or something. And we did not have Columbia payment in November. And then the insurance, y'all paid the liabilities and whatever.
So the end of the year insurance that you mailed in on the, on the, that, that hurt water and the fact that, I guess you could say you double paid Columbia?
That, that, I received two bills in October. As soon as I received the second one, I went ahead and paid it, but that was the bill that should have been normally paid in November.
Okay. All right, very well. So no, no big abnormalities other than that issue right there. Okay. All right, anybody got any questions, Don?
Insurance is a bigger abnormality.
Insurance is a big abnormality. Those are some staggering checks. Any like.
And most of those are annual, correct, Kay?
Annual.
Annual payments?
Yes, all of those insurance checks are annual payment.
Just good things, the big checks.
Yeah, it is, they're huge. The checks that are back there to be paid, Don, if you looked at them. I had a question about, well, I guess that goes to parking wreck. Jones for cuttings in December?
That's what me and Scotty were texting each other about right now. It's, I find it a bit rigorous when they're cutting rigrest, but I'm, that's what they're cutting before.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. Other than that, I wouldn't. Because I was, you know, I've done this guy, I haven't cut my rest in two months, so. But I'll, I'll get with Jeff and find out more about that.
He can, he can report back to us next meeting. I've signed the check. I'm going to pay this bill, but.
I'm like, you know, rigrest, I mean, I know, I know why I'm planning it.
Right.
Terry's been sawed this.
Right.
Listen, if we're not, if we're not using the field, there really don't need to be both.
Six, well, it was $6,800, I forget which.
It was $600.
$600, but it, that's.
It was three cuttings.
Right. At each building.
At each building, yeah. Well, those all at each park.
Yeah.
These two fields up here and that one field down there.
Right.
So that's.
Maybe you can give us a little update on that next meeting as to what happened on that, and maybe we won't have a, wait for the bill next month until then.
Yeah, Scotty's saying the same thing. I'm thinking half that much. You know, we maybe got to once a month or.
If we're not going, if we're not going to use the field, there's no need to cut rigrest because summer sun's going to die.
That's fine.
Yeah, but.
Let's figure I haven't.
Let's figure I haven't.
Save some money right there. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to pay that much.
What's that break for Jeff? I'm sure he's probably.
Yeah, Terry?
I don't know. It's not going to be that either.
Next on the agenda is the website issue, which Pat had asked last, or two council members apparently asked that that become the agenda this time. So Pat, you and Wayne, I guess, can take a little bit here.
Well, Wayne Morris is our website manager or developer, and we have looked into, tried to find a way to video the council meetings and be able to post them on our website. So then many municipalities do this. It's becoming more and more particularly trying to encourage more citizen participation in government. And of course, always transparency is an issue. We're trying to look at the best way to achieve this goal. And I had talked with several different companies about it, and in doing so, one of them, of course, was Wayne because it would have to be uploaded to our site. And we discussed it, and I got a quote from him, which I felt after talking to people was, you know, it was a very decent one. And he offered to come down here and video tonight at no charge and post it to the website so we could get some feel of what we would be getting and of what it would look like. Does anyone have any questions about it?
I do.
All right.
How much?
It would be about, for two meetings, it would be a total of $550 a month. It's $275 per meeting. And that includes the travel setup, audio check, recording of the meeting, the video transfer to editor, the adding produced intro for meeting, loading the meeting, you know, to the, uploading it to the YouTube channel, linking the meeting on the website, which we would have that additional charge with him regardless. And maintaining archived meetings up to six months at a time online, which, which is a lot of.
That's a lot.
Men, yes.
Six months would be 12 meetings. Oh, that's a lot. Do we have any comment media council people? I'd like to hear what everybody thinks about this. Starting down here, Alan, what do you think about this?
Well, I see the transparency in it. I think it's a good idea. You're talking about the archiving. Could that not be burned to CD and archive the CDs?
Eventually, it would be. How would that work, Wayne, after?
About the point where you'd fill up a CD.
Yeah, I mean, that's no problem. We probably would, would want to do that anyway.
Yes.
And, and archive those on a disc, a DVD disc anyway. We would do one meeting per disc, though. So in other words, you would keep a library of discs.
But it would be available online six months at a time.
Yes.
And then, of course, we would have permanent copies of it for our records. But if, on the inefficient government, talking nationwide about this in the different cities that have done this, they feel like it really helps in encouraging more citizen participation as far as committees go and et cetera, et cetera.
I, I will agree with that, Pat. Here's, here's kind of a philosophy thing. I think, you know, there's, there's a number of people in the community that it wouldn't matter what we did. They're not going to be interested in town government. That's fine. Nothing we can do about that. But there is a group that I believe that if we were encouraging and open and said, "Please come. Please participate. If you can't come to every meeting, that's okay. You can look at it on the web." I think there is a reasonably sizable enough portion of people that would respond to that and would be more involved in town government. So I get it from the, I, I think it's part of our responsibility as public service to encourage everybody that wants to, to participate. Can't make them, but I don't think we need to have any excuses out there for somebody, you know, to say, "Well, I don't know what's going on down there, and I can't find out." Well, I want to get rid of every possible excuse.
Absolutely. And a lot of people don't come, not because they're not interested, but either if they're young parents, they have children that aren't, that they have to get off to school, or their work schedules don't allow. For instance, a lot of nurses, and I had one tell me that very thing. She would be very interested in being on committees and et cetera, but she cannot do it at night. Well, most of our, a lot of our things don't require any nighttime involvement that we have for the education board, for instance. But it, it, I think, feel from the other cities that have done it have felt it was well worth the effort and the money to do it, and they saw, have seen some results from it.
Dennis, what do you think about this?
It's a lot of money, I think. I'm not saying that it's not worth it. Adobe Connect is another, you know, it's the one we use for work. But like Pat and I were talking about before, you have to have somebody come in and set the equipment up to do it. It's a lot cheaper, I think, Clay Hammonton who pays $30, $40, $50 a month. And we do all our shift activity reports on, or supervisor logs on this morning. Let us be a webcam that's more like Skype. Y'all don't think you get the same quality that you're going to get with what Pat set up here. I mean, I believe there's no doubt in my mind that the quality will probably be better because I've walked somewhere, but you've seen Skype, and you've seen webcams, and you know, you know, you get this shot in the face and, you know, you won't get this open that shot here, so. Somebody's got to do it.
Yeah. Don, what do you think? Good idea.
I abstain.
Terry, what do you think?
I think it's a good idea as, as far as transparency goes, but like Dennis says, it's, it's expensive. But just like fire police, we wouldn't make no money off of fire police. We provide service. And this broadcasting this on the web would be a service we're providing regardless of prices.
Our citizens, that's right.
I think it's more of like we've asked, referring back to citizens, is what, what y'all, if they want you to be out of the town. If they want to.
That's what I'm talking about. What y'all like.
If they don't want the service, we don't want them.
That's the point. That's the valid point. Y'all's the money. What y'all like. Well, you know, we're not going to vote on it tonight. So, you know, under our rules, we can't, we can't spend money the same night comes up anyway. So we got plenty of time to talk about it, but that's, that's, that's a great point. I think, I think y'all will be talking to all your constituents and say, "Hey, is it worth being on the web at all? You know, and if so, how much even?" You know.
Do you have, do you have a way of seeing how many people actually go to?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, that would be something to look at, you know. If there's five people to look at a month, it's not worth it. If there's 100 people that go to it, or, you know, some, whatever number you want to hit. But yeah, I'd say it's, I'd say it's worth it, you know. How many reviews do we get? You know, is there, is there a public comment section where, you know, they can have feedback on, you know, where you've been doing it and say, "Well, let me try to explain, you know, explain the dog law." You know, allow that on the front lines, you know. Y'all just.
I will say this, there's no long-term commitment, so you're not engaged in something that's going to occupy. I mean, if you decide after six months or whatever you look at it, hey, there's just not enough people viewing this or whatever, then you're out, you know.
And of course, your participation in the website will increase as people become aware of this and we get the word out that this is available. And then that would be a good measure to go by.
I will say one other thing about that, and using the YouTube tool, that becomes a viral effect. There is the opportunity that people would find something about Wilsonville through that avenue as opposed to the website and then end up back at the website. So there's a dual purpose in using that.
Yes, which is a growth promotion of town.
What is the limitation? Is it a particular clip on YouTube?
Yeah, if, if you, just because of our company and our relationship with YouTube, we don't have a limitation, and that's why we can do what we're talking about here. There is a 15-minute limitation otherwise.
Right.
Ricky, what do you think?
That's a lot of money, but I think we might want to try on trial basis and get to fill the paper on if it's, look like, like I say, who's looking at it and how many we.
I'd be interested to see it.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see too. I mean, because like I say, if it's, people's going to use it, I say just do it. If they ain't going to use it, I don't want to pay that money.
Okay, if we can pay the sample, I'm all for it. Calvin, what do you think?
Well, I want to know how much it's going to cost for start.
Same thing. It's a flat monthly thing. No extra charges.
So, so the bottom line, bottom line comes down to this. Y'all go out, talk, we're not going to vote on it as well. I'd say our, our rules procedure say we don't vote on something, you know, first night when we're spending money. And I'm going to try to stick to that unless some kind of emergency comes up. But the bottom line is, y'all need to ask people and say, "Do you think this is a service worth paying for? Here's what it's going to cost, $550 a month. Here's what you get. You get 12 meters of sitting there on the web all the time. Anybody can go look at anything they want to. And just see what y'all's feedback is on that. See what people think. You know, I don't necessarily, you know, this is, this is a democracy, but we also want to try to do what's the best thing, even if, if it isn't what the numbers are. But if it's overwhelmingly against or overwhelmingly for, generally, we probably ought to go with what the majority of the people think. If it's close, then we, as the representatives, have to kind of make the call of what we think's best. But if y'all, if everybody, if everybody you talk to says, "Man, it's a terrible idea. We don't want to spend this money." Go back and tell us that. If everybody says, "Oh, yeah, absolutely. We don't, we got to have that. Tell us that." But if it's close, be prepared to make a decision as to what you think is in the best interest of town.
Mayor, I would say if you decide to go forward with this, there would be, need to be some mechanism or vehicle for promoting and knowing that it's available, that it's, that it is. We can't just put it there and assume that people will know it. Shelby County reporter is a great idea, any kind of a town newsletter, anything like that. Obviously, we'd put it on the website, but.
We would, we would need to get a review on that from Shelby County, just have it art. We need to get a reporter down here.
And I think they would because it's unique.
Reporter and write an article on that.
Right.
You know, Wilsonville trying new service.
Yeah.
Water bill.
Putting on water. Putting on water.
Any type of vehicle like that would be helpful in making people aware. You can't just build it and hope they come because you have to make them aware of it. So in order to track actual numbers and know that whether it's effective or not, we've got to have awareness, and that's important.
And getting the reporter would be very helpful, and they would be willing to come because we would be the first municipality in Shelby County to do this. And that would be an attention getter.
That would, that would actually be cool for Wilsonville to be first on something.
Absolutely. And also, it's a good promotion of business for businesses that, Mike, you're trying to attract to come into the town.
Those of you that are in the audience tonight, if you would, think on that and ask people and call us for your opinions on that. We want to make the right call on it. It may be a terrific idea, may be too much money, I don't know. We need to know what everybody thinks, and so we'll go there. Any other comment from the council?
Let me just, let me just touch on this. Let me just, let me just touch on this, I met a lady in Patty's shop here about a month ago that came to Wilsonville, moved to Wilsonville, because she had seen us on our website, she had done a little research, she works for the, um, Missionary Union WMU, she works for WMU.
Oh, two eighty?
Yeah, on two eighty, she had an opportunity to move here from up in the Nashville area, I think it was, her husband had worked as a, um, in an assembly plan of some sort, and she had done some work like this, and she had opportunity to make the move, so it was her move, her moving, that moved her husband, but they'd done all the research on this place by our website that we have, then she came to visit at the school, Rosemary put her on the right track, she brought her children down here to meet Rosemary, and it was all over. So, our website has worked in this one case that I know of.
And I suspect there's others we don't need to know about. Any other comment on this, pick yourself. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the state severe weather preparedness sales tax holiday ordinance. Okay, uh, Kay can lead us into this discussion, if at the while we don't have to do what we have to do, if we do anything.
Well, if you're going to do it, you, you're going to have to suspend the rules and pass the ordinance tonight because the deadline to notify the Department of Revenue is January twenty-second. Um, there's, I sent you copies of two ordinance, is one of them is a permanent ordinance that goes all years thereafter, and one of them is on a yearly basis like the school tax holiday. They won't let you do the school tax holiday for all years thereafter, but they will let you do this one. Uh, I don't know how much response we had to it, and we did it before, the legislature passed it late last year, and therefore it was in July, uh, in the future, it will be in February each year unless they decide not to do it again.
These sales tax holidays are a little bit of a bookkeeping aggravation, so... Huh?
Nightmare.
Yeah, uh, and, uh, you know, you, I, I wish they'd just do away with some of these sales taxes, period, but, uh, you know, I don't wanna do anything necessarily hurt town revenue, on the other hand, uh, I'm, I'll be opinion that anytime we can sorta help our local businesses and help our citizens with a little bit of a tax break, I tend to be for it, don't know how big this one is, this one was passed last year late, like Kay was saying, in July, and I don't think it had the sort of effect last year, I, I, it's not as well-known and not nearly as utilized as the back-to-school sales tax holiday is, uh, I don't really wanna, like I say, it's a little bit of a bookkeeping nightmare, but I think that if, uh, several municipalities are doing it, and they are, although my understanding is kind of a hit or miss on this one, it's not near the participation rate that, uh, the back-to-school, uh, sales tax holiday is, I'm a little bit ambivalent on this one, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, I guess I'm probably inclined to say that's, let our, um, businesses compete at the best level they can and get any business that comes of that, uh, but that's y'all's call, uh, uh, how long is it, my answer?
The holiday?
Yeah.
It's the last weekend in February, from, uh, February twenty-second to the twenty-fourth.
Just, just one week?
One week, just like the back-to-school one. And the back-to-school one, I think's gonna have more participation because people don't think about whether preparedness until something happens.
Right.
They gotta send the kid to school, so they're gonna participate more in that one, I think, than they'll do...
This is not a huge issue one way or the other, I don't think.
I think, I think more people will participate this year because they're gonna get it on the news, about, don't forget, sales tax break, but I don't know how many businesses we've got that's gonna offer the items that's gonna be exempt.
Batteries and flashlights. Batteries and flashlights, uh, I, I even am broke without...
I don't have, uh, generators, that kind of thing, but I don't think we have the business at sales, generators.
That's what I was gonna say, if I was, if that be the day, I'd wanna buy a generator.
Yeah.
That's right.
Well, you can run down to Lisco and get one.
Well, we got, have Lisco and Dollar Store and, um, HUDs.
I'm, I'm all for it, but which way do we wanna go, we wanna do it again next year, or we wanna go ahead and do the perpetual thing?
I would say, I would say, we did this only, only back-to-school thing too, we did just did it for one year, you can't do that perpetually anyway. Uh, you know, if this thing turns out to be a bookkeeping nightmare and it doesn't generate any extra business, let's give ourselves kind of an easy out on that, I think I'm for it, but I'm not real strongly for it, I mean, it's, like I say, it's, I, I just don't think it's that big of an issue, but we just need, we're, we're kind of, our mask against the law, we had it decided not. Uh, I guess, I guess the first thing...
I'm making a motion, this is kinda rude.
Can I make a motion to pass it on a...
No, we gotta...
Or we didn't vote.
Terry moved to suspend, right?
I think the annual.
Dennis second. Dennis, Don, Calvin?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Now I'll make my motion, uh, to pass the state severe weather, um, sales tax holiday ordinance on an annual basis.
In other words, you're saying this is your own...
Right. It was the same. Dennis?
Yes.
Don?
Yeah.
Calvin?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Little barbecue tax holiday, huh?
More of a passive thing, isn't it?
And throw cheeseburger.
Cheeseburger.
The only, the only council committee that I knew was going to say something tonight was, uh, website, that's already been done, anybody else got a thing from any committee that wanna contribute this evening?
Me and Calvin talked for good holidays, we're, we're gonna get together and, uh, pretty quick and sit down with David and try to get a game plan going, rock and roll, so, hopefully we'll have something, not this month, the next month.
Uh, can, can y'all give us any feedback on, uh, what the, uh, what everybody thinks about, uh, having the, uh, uh, safety appreciation, uh, night at four H P?
Well, we haven't had a meeting the last two, Tuesday nights, the holidays, so we really haven't been together long enough.
The ones I talked to, alright.
Alright, uh, does anybody have anything they wanna put on the agenda next month? Council agenda time.
Yeah.
Don?
I want to review the ordinance that we made in that yard sale.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, so yard sale... Yard sale permit, yeah, is gonna be on the agenda. Anybody else wanna place anything on the agenda, Don?
Surplus equipment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright. That's on the agenda, surplus equipment. Anything else?
Looking at the old shop and see if we can put some doors on the front of it, so you can put the equipment in.
Shop doors.
The website videoing?
Terry, go.
Yeah, go second.
You're slow.
Slow it down, okay? Pat, you gonna let something...
Website videoing.
Well, whatever's gonna be on there anyway.
I just wanna make...
I need a second on that.
Second.
Don, you got anything else?
No, no, I run out.
Anybody else? Okay, so the council, the council has determined that these four items will be on the agenda next month, uh...
It's on the second meeting this month.
I mean, excuse me, later this month, thank you.
Next meeting.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, the yard sale, permit, surplus equipment, shop doors, the website video, all four of those, okay, go ahead and put them on the agenda for next month, also on the, I mean, for next meeting, also, also, uh, Gordon Flucker has come in and asked to be on the agenda for the next meeting, so he will be on the agenda as well. Uh, okay, any other agenda?
The heat topic.
I don't know the topic for sure, but I'm sure it's gotta do with water.
It's gotta do with running water line down to Hummer Lane.
Yeah.
Over here, yeah, I know.
Okay, council agenda, council comment.
What surplus equipment done around?
Roger, you need to be prepared to talk about all that next week.
Just get some ideas. Let me put Roger on the table.
Well, he, he told everyone surplus...
He's already, uh, automatically...
Roger is surplus equipment.
If Roger's on the agenda, let him down.
I say it. That Crown Vic needs to be topped, what is it?
Yeah, okay, alright, well, good, let's have a list up then, we'll, we'll, we'll tag it, I'm all for it.
Yeah, we didn't specify, it just says, excess equipment.
Crown Vic has already been declared excess equipment sometime back, it just hasn't been...
It's been a year ago.
Alright, what about, uh, any other council comments, Dennis, Don, Calvin, Pat?
We're gonna wait till we talk to them before we go on the talk.
I'd like to thank, uh, Wayne for coming and doing this demonstration for us, and encourage everyone to go on our website and look at the results, see what you think about
Alright, public comment now. Larry Love?
Question, uh, we missed the last meeting, uh, since we're gonna be having, um, two meetings a month, is it gonna be the first and third Monday of the month?
No, it's a little bit odd in that it's the first and next to last, and, and the reason for that is, is that the third actually conflicts with, uh, uh, Don Arce Love, uh, and so we were trying to avoid as much of that conflict as possible, there is one other little oddity too, the second meeting generally will be at six PM, and it will, instead of six-thirty, it will generally be the shorter of the two meetings where we're mostly just approving checks, bills, and things like that.
You said the second meeting of the month will be at six?
At six PM.
The first will be at six-thirty?
The first is at six-thirty, like it's always been, and the idea about the six PM next to last Monday of the month is to get in and out and keep a shorter agenda so that, uh, you know, we're not here all night.
We'll see to it that the times are posted on our website.
They already are, the, uh, the date's already on the calendar.
Right. And, uh, let's see, more public comment? Joe, you look like you're fixing to say something.
I'd like Terry to second.
No other public comment. In that case then, a, a motion to overturn the meeting order.
Calvin's made the motion, and I'll second it.